Commissioners, we're, I think we're still waiting on county council, so we may. I did, I wanted to, wanted to. Yeah, so maybe. Okay, so she's, she's on her way. I just got notice.
Good morning, everyone. Now that we're all here, we will go ahead and start our August 27th Planning Commission meeting. And if you would join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Vicki, roll call.
Here.
Here.
Here. Okay, we'll go ahead and have our report. EJ?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm EJ Evaldi with the Planning Services Division. Let's see, real quick, let's just go over the Planning Commission schedule coming up. September 10th, the regularly scheduled meeting, we're going to cancel that meeting. So you get a two-week, two-week reprieve before the next meeting, which is scheduled for September 24th. We have a couple Tahoe items on there. Peak 10, also called Sun and Sand, that's redevelopment of an existing hotel with 10 multifamily residential units. That is tentatively on that agenda. Also, the Denny's Trailer Park, where they're reconfiguring some lots to allow for individual ownership. We are also talking about bringing forward a general plan amendment to address the state legislation regarding flood protection and the so-called 200-year flood plane. If we can get everything together, we'll bring that on that agenda. The winery ordinance. We are feverishly working on addressing comments on the environmental document. And if all goes well, that will also be brought to the September 24th Planning Commission meeting. The Board of Supervisors hearings, there was only one since the last meeting, October 18th. I think you're all aware that they were acting on a temporary conditional use permit extension for the emergency shelter. That was approved, and that takes it through April 29th of 2016. And that's all I have. One other thing, you know, with all the work that is coming our way, we are making some staffing changes. One of our newest hires is in the audience today. Her name is Jacqueline DeBets. And she, she will be, she's coming onboard as a senior management analyst. And our hope is to have her take on some of the responsibilities that have been shifted over from the CEO's office regarding all the finance plans and tax sharing agreements. She'll be helping out Michelle Kingsbury. So we're very glad to have her aboard. She comes from Humboldt County, if I haven't said that already. And so just want to welcome her today. And that's all I have. Unless you have any questions, we can get going.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it for public comment. If anybody wishes to comment on anything other than what's on our agenda today. Seeing no one, we will go to the consent agenda, and there's nothing on the consent agenda. So we will go to our 1005 item, Pantel Stafford Minor Boundary Line Adjustment, Third-Party Appeal, Parcel Review Committee's Approval of the Minor Boundary Line Adjustment.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Little technical difficulty there. The item before you is a third-party appeal by Michael Garabedian on behalf of Friends of the North Fork of the Pantel Stafford.
Melanie, you want to announce your name?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I'm Melanie Jackson. I'm a planner with Plaster County, and I'm going to be representing or discussing, presenting this MBLA today. So this is a Minor Boundary Line Adjustment Appeal by Friends of the North Fork. The Minor Boundary Line Adjustment, as you may know, is a shift in property between two parcels or two more, two or more adjoining parcels without having to go through the parcel map process. These are the two parcels. They're located at 1540 and 1440 on Dog Bar Road in the Colfax area. The Pantel property is this property right here, located to the east and north of the Stafford property, which is located right here. And just a heads up beforehand, you'll see it on the plat, but this is the piece of the property in question here. And as you can see, it runs along the Bear River. And again, just to point out, this is the Pantel property. This is their one assessor's parcel, and then the second assessor's parcel is right here, and that's Stafford. This is the plat for the Minor Boundary Line Adjustment, thank you, that shows where the shift is going to occur. There's a 1.99 portion of property right here, acre portion of property right here, that belongs to Stafford. And there is an access about right here. Here's the bridge that goes over the river. The access is basically right at the corner right there. And that is an access that has been basically in use since the property, basically since it was necessary. There is a structure on both properties. The structure on this property, according to the property owner, has been here since approximately 1950 and has been used as a residence up to two to three years ago. The purpose of this Minor Boundary Line Adjustment, according to the applicants, is to essentially give that piece of property, since it's already been used as access for so many years, they want to shift this property over to the Pantels. This property is essentially unusable, except for that access. There is a 100-foot setback from the center line of the river right here. And it is, it basically takes up that entire portion, that entire 1.99 acre. So based on that setback, without a variance, it's unbuildable. Moreover, it's also very steep, so I don't think you could build on it anyway. So the categorical exemption, categorical exemption was found by the Parcel Review Chairman. This section requires that the parcel be less than 20% in average slope. It cannot change the land use or density, and it must be, must not create any more parcels. In this case, the chairman found that no parcels were created as a result of the adjustment. Staff looked at the GIS of the property and found an average slope of less than 20%. And there will be no change in the density. The zoning will remain the same. Minimum parcel size will remain the same. And so the chairman found that this was consistent with the Minor Boundary Line Adjustment, and was therefore exempt. And this section is of the Subdivision Map Act, which requires, has similar requirements. In order to find a boundary, in order to approve a Minor Boundary Line Adjustment, the Parcel Review Chairman must make a determination of whether or not the parcels resulting from the lot line adjustment will conform to the general plan. The zoning and the building ordinances, and again, it must not create any further parcels. There's additional requirements listed down here, general types of requirements that you would need for any other kind of project. Again, it needs to be consistent with the general plan, needs to be consistent with zoning and building ordinances. And this Parcel Review Chairman found that the Minor Boundary Line Adjustment was consistent with these requirements, and therefore approved the minor boundary line adjustment. The, an appeal was filed by Michael Garabedian on behalf of the Friends of the North Fork, and several issues were cited. These include inadequate noticing, absence of a staff report, incomplete exemption verification form, that it's not exempt from SEQA, it's inconsistent with the general plan, community plan, and the zoning ordinance, that it illegally creates an additional parcel, inadequate department review, poor site access, impacts to visual and scenic resources, and that the county incorrectly reviewed the Minor Boundary Line Adjustment as a ministerial item. For the inadequate noticing issue, for Minor Boundary Line Adjustment, a mailed notice is not required. The Minor Boundary Line Adjustment showed on the agenda for the Parcel Review Committee is the notice and is considered adequate per the Brown Act. And therefore, staff determined that there was no support for the claim that there was inadequate noticing. The second issue was whether or not a staff report was required. The appellant is correct, no staff report was prepared for the Minor Boundary Line Adjustment for the Parcel Review Committee hearing. And this is general procedure. Staff reports are not required for Minor Boundary Line Adjustment. And for that reason, staff finds no issue with not having that report handy. Incomplete exemption verification form, again, the appellant is correct on this. The exemption verification form, the portion that is called out is at the bottom of the exemption verification form. And what you do there is you fill out what the exemption is. That isn't complete until after the Parcel Review hearing, because it can't be found to be exempt except by the Parcel Review Chairman. So it actually can't be filled out until it is found exempt. And once it's, once it is, it's filled out by the chairman after the hearing, and after it's been approved and found exempt. The fourth issue is that the MBLA is not exempt from SEQA. And again, as stated previously, the chairman found that it is in fact exempt from SEQA because it meets all of the requirements set forth by the, by SEQA. And therefore, we found that there was no issue with that exemption. Same with number five, inconsistent with the general plan, community plan, and zoning ordinance. Staff reviewed the MBLA, found that it was consistent with these documents, and the PRC Chairman found this as well, and thereby approved the Minor Boundary Line Adjustment. Issue number six is illegal creation of an additional parcel. The Minor Boundary Line Adjustment begins with two parcels that are developed. It ends with two parcels, and both parcels will still conform to the zoning and density requirements. Staff found no merit in this claim. Number seven, inadequate department review. The MBLA was distributed to all required departments, reviewed, and was found consistent with the general plan, community plan, and zoning ordinance. Poor site access. The response to this is, essentially, this access has been in use since approximately 1950, at least. It's considered legal non-conforming because of this. Like I said, it was 1950, and it's been used up until two to three years ago. So for this reason, staff found that the access was adequate and appropriate for the Minor Boundary Line Adjustment, and found no merit in the claim that it should be, should require SEQA review under an initial study for poor site access. There was also, number nine, impacts to visual and scenic resources. Staff found no merit in this claim as well, and for several reasons. One is that the property that we're really looking at, which is the northern property, could be developed at this point regardless with further accessory buildings, secondary residences. It could rebuild the other residence, or even tear it down and create a new one. So visual impacts would, would, anything that could be built on the property would result in the same visual impacts if the MBLA was approved. And that's, again, part because that portion that's being added is unbuildable. So further visual impacts basically couldn't occur. We also have a statement that the MBLA was incorrectly reviewed as a ministerial item. This is not the case. We've reviewed it in accordance with Subdivision Map Act and SEQA, found that it met all the requirements, and therefore it was approved by the Parcel Review Chairman. So in conclusion, staff recommends that you deny the third-party appeal filed by Michael Garabedian on behalf of Friends of the North Fork, and reaffirm the zoning administrator's determination of the categorical exemption and approval of the Minor Boundary Line Adjustments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Wayne? Melanie, we've gotten some emails in the last couple of days with some additional comments from the appellant. Is, is there anything you want to address in that?
There, the comments that were submitted yesterday came in late enough in the day that staff did not have time to review, to the point where we could comment on them today.
Because the, that one parcel is gaining some acreage, almost two acres.
Yeah.
Does that give it the ability to have more coverage on there for more structures as a percentage of the overall parcel?
There is a percentage of coverage for accessory structures on the property, and actually all structures on the property. So it would increase it minimally, I would say.
The two acres doesn't add that much?
It doesn't add that much, based on the percentage.
I guess, you know, part of that question is, when you say "coverage", it's not number of units on the parcel, it's just size.
Physical, physical covering.
That's correct.
Footage.
Correct.
Square footage. Any other questions?
Quick question, Melanie. So with the increase in buildable area on one parcel, there's also a corresponding decrease on the other parcel that's losing area, correct?
That's correct.
So we're not, total numbers aren't being changed?
That's correct.
Might be shifted.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Okay, would the appellant like to come up and address the Commission?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission, especially for this opportunity to interact about this project. I think it's a very critical thing. The, as a staff report says, which we don't agree with, that this has been a matter between the Parcel Review Committee and the staff. And what's missing here is the public involvement. Number one, in terms of environmental disclosure. So I'm Michael Garabedian. I'm here representing Friends of the North Fork. And what we would hope you would do is, at the end of the hearing, determine to continue this so we can work with staff. I'll tell you quickly how we got here. Minor Boundary Line Adjustments have happened in some of the, been part of the process towards creating some of the most significant eyesore houses in the North Fork Canyon. Example is the house on Eagle Ridge Road, Minor Boundary Line Adjustment there. The, the house over Clementine, over Robert's Roost, built in 2007. Again, a Boundary Line Adjustment created that parcel, whereas previously, it was, building envelope was down behind the ridge and not with that major visibility from the mid-Clementine access road. The 20-acre parcel that was changed from a Boundary Line, by Boundary Line Adjustment to no longer be part of the Belcara appeal that has gone up to the Board of Supervisors from you. Again, a Minor Boundary Line Adjustment. So this project, I mean, the reason we're actually here is that this is the first project we've seen on the PRC's agenda of a Minor Boundary Line Adjustment. And so we seized it as an opportunity, and much to our surprise, it has revealed far more problems than we thought. I mean, essentially, a Mounter, from our view, a Mounter Boundary Line Adjustment is, don't touch it. Planning doesn't touch it. They don't go on the property. They don't know what's there. It just happens. And, and we don't get a staff report. We finally got a report here in this appeal. The, the disclosure, the, the, the zero disclosure especially has to do with what we need to know about the environmental, potential environmental impacts of what's happening here. The, right now, there's, judging from the property, there is no access to it. And in fact, at the Parcel Review Committee, Mr. Stafford testified. He spoke to the committee, and he said, "The reason for this is to provide legal access to the Pantel property." To me, that means they don't have legal access, and they're certainly not using it. Anybody who looks at the road can tell that there's, there's no activity on there. Even on Google Earth, you can see that the house there is, is falling apart. It's overgrown. It's not used. It may be a nuisance. We made a complaint about that. To try to get, hopefully someone from the county will go on and take a look at it. That's not an issue here, the complaint, of course. The, the house may not be code, obviously. The, the access that this, what this will do, well, at this point, I want to step aside for a moment and talk about a fundamental problem with the staff report. If you will look at page 37 of your handout, and go back to that slide that showed the, showed the two lots that are exchanging, you will see that according to Giuliani and Cole, the resultant Pantel parcel is not just this parcel, this roughly 19 to 20-acre parcel. It is also the 49-acre parcel to the north, which you can, you can, you can't see it on here. But if you look at this page, you will see, and this is, presently, this is about a 19 or 20-acre parcel. And with the two acres added, the Pantel large parcel on the right would be about 20, 22 acres. Well, what the staff in their report and what their presentation misses is the 49-acre parcel on top. I don't, I don't know how you can proceed with this kind of inaccurate information or lack of clarity. I think you should get that clarity, because it, it not only opens up access, from our point of view, to the, to the 21-acre parcels, it opens up all the way over to here, this bordering on the Fish and Game property here. And this process, up in the corner of page 37, near the canal here, is a proper, a parcel, an area that has not been built on, that could be, once they get road access, it could be opened up for, say, a secondary home. And development on that.
Michael?
Yes.
I, I, I'm sort of following you, but I really have a hard time, because what if Pantel bought all the Stafford property and all the lots around? And it was just a regular sell? Would you be saying, because there's one ownership, and they could access all the properties, that they couldn't buy or sell the property?
No, we have no comment on the project itself, about the.
Well, there's no, there's, when you say "project", you, you're giving me the impression that they're developing something out there other than doing a Minor Boundary Line Adjustment. And that's, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, thank you for asking.
Where your issue is, whether it's access or whatever. It's a Minor Boundary Line Adjustment. I don't see anything in any of the information before me that states that they're improving an old house that's out there, or there's other potential building envelopes out there, and that, that something's going to happen.
Well, of course.
You know, you're, I get the impression you're trying to make us think that there's something going beyond what's before us.
No, the, the, our point is that the access would open up these properties, development, in the way that.
So you're saying?
In that the way that they.
A person doesn't have any right to access their property.
Not legally, according to Mr. Stafford. The owner.
Well, I don't know if he's, if he's here. I, I see what's before us, what's, you know, go ahead and on with issues, but.
Well, there's two parts of it. Second part of the answer to your question is that you should have that information before you in the form of a environmental disclosure document, that the, these events, these possible things could happen as a result of this access, of, result of this access. So our view is that you are actually supposed to have a SEQA document that does disclose these potential impacts, and I'll go into that some more. So we're not, we're, you know, we're not talking about change.
I, I understand potential impacts, if a project's before us, on, on something where we're talking about raw land, where we're changing a Boundary Line Adjustment, and there's, there's nothing proposed right now. I mean, how can you tell me that, that there's impacts? I mean, there's potential impacts on every, every parcel anywhere?
Well, the Secretary of the Resources Agency agrees with you as a general matter, because it, it provides for an exemption for, from SEQA for minor adjustments to land, including minor divisions and so forth. And it lists some, he lists some examples in that, in that provision. I think it's the same one she put up there. Now, that, we don't believe that this subdivision, because of its potential significant impacts and its unusual circumstances. And she was addressing that partly with the 20% slope issue, because of that exemption issue. So the, the rule is that, yes, it may be exempt under this, what the secretary issued the rule for, but in unusual circumstances, such as this, in which I'll describe the things, impacts that could happen as a result of this change of land, it, it should not be exempt from SEQA, and we should have the environmental disclosure at this time. So, so it, it is. So, so it, it is, there's no question it's a project. It is a project, well...
It's a boundary line adjustment.
Yeah, I don't think that ties, you haven't made a case today, as far as I'm concerned so far, of how this ties to the decision that's before us today. So, you're going to have to get to that at some point, because I'm not seeing it.
Okay, well, I'll give you some more information, but the point, the question is, should this be subject to environmental disclosure or not? That is the issue. And that is the information that we believe you should have before you, before you act on this. So, the, the, well, what the project is, is unclear. I'll go back to that. Is it, is it, is it 37 with, with the 49 acres on top? Or is it just the roughly 20 acre parcel?
The only parcel we're dealing with is the one we're talking about. We're not talking about, you know, 40 acres above.
Page 23, Mr. Giuliani says we are, that that is part of the resultant parcel. They say it on their map. That may be your opinion, but the engineer who prepared this and worked on this is different. And we, I think we and you deserve some clarification about that key point. And there are a number of other problems with the staff report, and I don't want to belabor those. We've gone over that in an email. So, the, on the 49 acre, what appears to be on the 49 acre parcel, there is a promontory, and also an open area that you can, you see on Google Earth, that could be a new building site, and it could indeed be a new building site, because it's a, it could be a secondary structure.
You keep going back to theoretical projects that aren't before us.
This, this is all what SEQA's about, is anticipating environmental impacts in the future.
That's, that's when a project comes before us. If they were building a house, or, or they came before us up there on a building envelope, on a different parcel or whatever, that's when we would deal with that. We're dealing with a minor boundary.
I respectfully disagree. I, I don't believe that a secondary house would come before you. And, so, that, that is, there may be other building sites on the property too, that this would open up access to. Now, this could open it up to logging. There's a lot of nice looking trees, very large diameter trees near the canal, running along the canal. This property is between the canal and the river. I'm not sure who owns them. There are traffic impacts at the corner, at the, at the corner where the, it says proposed line, the lower proposed line, that is an arrow to the, where the gate is to the property that's presently closed. And if you, you can look at it and see that road hasn't been used for a long time. That is a sharp right-hand curve. There is, there is a potential of both increased traffic from people using the, using it. What the environmental disclosure is all about is if anticipating that this could be done at this time is mitigating it. If there's something that can be done to mitigate that problem as part of the environmental disclosure, disclosing it, analyzing it, and seeing if there's a way to mitigate it. That, that's your job, to have that information before you.
If, if there's a project where there's increased traffic, I, you talk about increased traffic, I don't see any increased traffic.
If it was, if it was...
If there was a project there that we could see, I would understand your concerns.
Well, a, a logging project doesn't come before you, but it can't happen now without legal access. This would give legal access for potential logging of the land.
I think that question was asked and answered by staff. You know, I mean, I don't... Okay, go, go ahead.
Well...
Try to give me something that I can...
I think, well...
Work with.
Let's look at the exemption form that was filled out by a person named Pantel. The SEQA exemption form has some numbered, I don't know if it's in your packet or not. It has some numbers items, numbered items on it. And one says, are there, is there, is there riparian area? I don't think it's in your packet. Now, Mr. Pantel checked the box that said no. Well, obviously, the, that entire stretch there is riparian, and the NID owns immediately north of that, basically 100 foot wide piece of the shaded, the crosshatch property. But then beyond that is more riverine, on the 49 acre parcel, is more riparian. So, you have before you an application where Mr. Pantel said there isn't any riparian, and that's obviously wrong. It was signed by the Parcel Review Chairman. So, this opens up the possibility of also riparian impacts, and calls into question that whether there should be an exemption from environmental disclosure. You and I may not be experts, you know, environmental disclosure, and the whole question is, you know, are you going to have that information before you, prepared so you can study it? Not you and me crystal balling the outcome. The, the exemption it's claimed is the kind of exemption that if there are unusual circumstances, it distinguishes it from the exemption, and that makes an exception to the exemption. And that's what we believe is applicable here, that this, this situation is different, that, that how you picture it in your mind, not being a major change, is different than that. The, for, for the, for that, for that exemption to apply, there has to be not any increase, not any change, I should look for the exact language, maybe we could pull that back up here. The exemption language. Okay, not resulting in the creation of any new parcel. Well, I think staff is interpreting that to mean not any more parcels in terms of numbers. But this does create two parcels with new configurations, and according to Mr. Giuliani...
Yeah.
That's the purpose of a boundary line, is to reconfigure the two parcels.
But it doesn't add parcels.
And we think it means more than adding numbers, that any could mean any, a change in part, change and so forth. Now, the, the, the types of impacts we've needed that this could happen, just make this different. The county, you should be, the county needs to be stewarding its, there's a major recreation use along there, at the Dog Bore Bridge also, on the other side of the river. There's a trail up the river.
On the other side, you say?
Yes, on the other side.
On the other...
And I know it's...
We're, we're, we're dealing with a certain parcel, and you keep talking about all these other parcels, trying to, to drag them in. They don't have anything to do with this amount, you know, minor boundary line.
They are environmentally impacted by this proposal, sir. They are absolutely environmentally impacted by this. It does, I, as a Placer County person, have used that trail a number of times over the last 10 years, and it is a...
I don't, is, is there a visual impact that's changing?
It could be, if that...
It, it could be.
That's what SEQA's all about, is anticipating...
The thing is, is we're not dealing in could be's.
But it couldn't happen without...
We're dealing in, no, I mean, I don't see any change in setbacks from the river. I don't see any request for alteration of the property and stuff. I just see a reconfiguration of the property.
Yes, and we're saying in this case, unlike nearly all others, that this is a different case. It is an unusual case because of these factors affecting this area. And that is what we see in other situations. You can't just say, because it's an MBLA, we won't look at it at all, we won't do a staff report, there's no, it's all, it's exempt from SEQA. This is a, a major problem for, for us to at least look at, recognize situations where there's a need for the environmental review, and this is one of them.
Mr. Garabedian, what did you, you mentioned upfront when you...
Sorry?
When you opened up and made your initial statement, what you said you were looking for was more time with staff to work things out.
Yes.
What do you expect to accomplish?
To help you with your, what we see is your job at this point, because this, the staff report is mistaken in many regards, and we think there are, you need to consider things that could be done to this project, conditions that might be able to be put on it to lessen or mitigate the potential environmental impacts. And we haven't had a chance to meet with staff, been busy preparing, and like the last memo last night, studying the, the SEQA exemption and exception to the exemption. We don't think, we think you should ask the staff to apply, imply themselves to this, and meet with us, and not just pass it on. I mean, not just approve it as it is. It needs what it hasn't had from the start.
Hypothetically, what condition would you put on this?
That's a good question. I think conditions would have, in one instance, something to do with recognizing there is potential for construction in a certain area. We could identify that area, look at it, look at it on the ground, and determine if it is a potential unsightly thing for a stretch of the river from the trail, so forth. And there might be a condition that deals with that, deals with assuring that it's not an eyesore for the river and canyon. That, that's one example I could think of.
Okay. Actually, that's something if a project came before us where they were building something that staff would be looking at and we would be looking at. That's when something of that nature would probably come in. For what we're doing now, that's, that's not something that, that we're looking at because it's not before us.
Well, we're trying to tell you, it, it could very well come before you on an appeal from the Parcel Review Committee, just like this, last week, the Dedurka House, which is a secondary house, secondary house, built on the same lot with the eyesore house on top of Eagle Ridge. That was pulled off calendar by the Parcel Review Committee.
Mr. Chair, I, I have to interrupt. With all due respect, this, that item is not in front of this planning commission. Ask the appellant to stay on target.
And I guess the point I'm try, I'm trying to get, you know, with you...
I'm trying to answer the question.
He's raised it.
Michael, is, you're, everything that you're telling us is hypothetical. It's, it's something that I guess myself, and listening to some of the other commissioners, say, it's, it's an issue that's not before us, and you, you're bringing up all these hypotheticals, and, and, you know, what might happen in the future and stuff, and it doesn't have anything to do with this. And is what I want to hear from you is something that has to do with what's before us today?
Can I, can I say something? The appeal is on what staff has done and what staff brought to us. Basically, you're saying they goofed up.
Well...
No, wait, say, let me finish.
Okay.
So, it's, so, that's what we have to determine, so you're going to have to convince us that, and so far on this, on that one that's up on the board right now, I think staff has done a great job. Is there anything else that you think, now, they answered all the questions here, and I think to my satisfaction, but is there anything else that, besides what's on the board up there, that they violated? Not what they might have violated, but that's a SEQA requirement or a, a process, a procedure, because a lot of your comments in your memos is that you're, you said they didn't follow procedure, notification, and some of these things. Is there anything else that would lead me to believe, or any of the other commissioners, that staff did not follow Placer County codes, legal's advice, engineering's advice, whatever, that they should have done this somehow differently? Not at the staff level, but had brought the whole package to us from the get-go? That's, that's what we're, that's what you appealed here, basically, is saying that the staff didn't interpret SEQA, didn't interpret the notification requirement, didn't, you know, whatever. And I haven't heard anything that, that convinces me so far that, that in fact, they didn't do this right.
Well, we had a chance to work with staff on the notification issue, so some of that has been resolved. And I don't know that there's, I could only suggest to you that, that if I were sitting in your position, I would want more information in terms of the staff report, because there are a number of inaccuracies in it that described...
Like what?
In the memo, that there's access to the parcel, that there's a residence on it.
We know that.
That's not true.
But a resident, you, you said there was a residence that was falling apart. Falling apart, so there's a residence already there. Isn't that correct?
Nobody's living there. There's no access, we understand, there's no access to the parcel.
No legal access, they've been using that road for a long time.
You're, you're saying it's not legal, but that, that's...
If they've been using it for a long time, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not an attorney either, but since they've been using it a long time, they probably could get whatever that prescript is easement, they probably could continue using, and they couldn't even probably be able to, not to do it. But anyway, that's another whole issue.
And honestly, that, that part's not before us.
You're speculating.
It has nothing to do with that.
Well, I need to, I need to...
The structure on there doesn't have...
I need to respond to his point.
It's, it's the lot, line, boundary.
I want to respond to his point. The reason this appeal is here is because of the need for environmental disclosure, to disclose the potential impacts. I've listed half a dozen of them, including our questioning, the, the general 20%. We've never seen that, that calculation slopes, average slopes are less than 20, and I, I don't, it doesn't appear it includes the 39 acre, 49 acre parcels. So, there's a lot of unknown information, but we're here fundamentally because we think you should have environmental, whether you want it or not, you should have the environmental disclosure, and that's what our effort is, so that when someone, when they come in and sign an exemption, environmental, a SEQA exemption form with a false, a false indication, you know, a false indication on it, that there's no riparian, for instance, that SEQA has to be, needs to be considered in this, or we will get the problems I'm talking about. They, they will inevitably, they do happen in this county, MBLAs lead to further development, they're, they're, why would they be doing it, you know?
Well, it will come before us if there's a change down the road. It would come either before staff, and they would certainly process it, and there would be an opportunity for input, or it's going to come to us, and there will be opportunity for input at that point. We're, you're talking about things down the road that we have no insight on at this point. And again, as far as I'm concerned, you've not made your case to override what the staff has done at this point. So, you could go on all day, and I'm not sure you're going to convince us, because we're looking at the decision we have to make today, and I think staff has done the job they need to do.
Well, why don't we see if the applicant has something to say, and if I may come back after that, I may want to come back after that.
If...
I'm not sure it's necessary here for me.
I don't know if it's necessary, but I'd give you two minutes if it's something that isn't what we've already discussed.
Because I think I've already responded to his question about logging and so forth. It would not come before you, I don't believe.
Thank you.
Unless there are any other questions?
No. Okay, would anyone else like to come and speak on this issue? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion.
I just have one quick question of staff, maybe legal, or, you know, some issues have been brought up that you've answered in the memo that came to us already, but is there anything in, in the new correspondence of, of yesterday and today, or the last couple of days, that need to be addressed from a SEQA standpoint, or anything?
My, my review of the correspondence, I mean, obviously, the, the record has been flooded in the last several days with information, and, and a lot of it is based on, on CEQA, but we, you know, the parcel review committee chairman found that this is, is categorically exempt, and, you know, we, we stand by that, and that, that's where we sit. You know, once again, just to, as far as a boundary line adjustment, I mean, this is basically a, you know, a transaction between two property owners where the only affected people are those two property owners. There's, there's the uses that are allowed now, prior to an approval, are the same uses that would be allowed after the approval. This is simply, you know, an agreement between the two property owners with, you know, staff's approval of that.
Okay, thank you. So you see no reason for a delay?
Staff doesn't at this point.
And I would concur, even with the correspondence received this morning at, I believe, 8:30 in the morning regarding CEQA, I see no basis to conclude other than what staff has concluded. I would also point out that, as staff has pointed out in the staff report, that Government Code Section 66412D, which is part of the Subdivision MAP Act expressly exempts lot line adjustments from the Subdivision MAP Act process. And in a case in 2012, Sierra Club versus Napa County, case, the court expressly took up this issue and said that, that basically, this particular provision of the MAP Act was to make minor technical adjustments between contiguous parcels, and in fact, found it to be ministerial in that particular case. I'm not suggesting that we are changing the conclusion. Staff used a proper exemption under CEQA. That's our, our purview to do so, versus finding it ministerial, and in fact, provides more information to the PRC as to that particular minor boundary adjustment. But it is a very, very, very limited, per state law, review of a minor boundary line adjustment, and I didn't find anything compelling in through information provided by appellant to suggest to this commission that staff's conclusion be revised.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Are you ready to accept a motion?
Yep.
All right, with that, I'll move that we follow staff's recommendation and uphold the decision of the parcel review committee chairman, and deny the third-party appeals filed by Michael Garabeanian on behalf of Finsley North Fork, reaffirm the zoning administrator's determination of category exemption, and approve the MBLA, along with the CEQA findings as outlined in the agenda, and the three boundary line adjustment findings that are listed in the agenda.
A second, Matt.
Have a motion in a second. Fifty, if you can do roll call.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. If anyone would want to appeal this, they have 10 calendar days to appeal, and the appeal fee is $552. Okay. We'll go to our Placer County Conservation Plan update.
Oh, he wants five.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. We'll take five minutes.
Yeah, I kind of saw that.
Zoom through the slides and focus on areas where you have interest, but mostly answer as many questions as possible. Fifty-year program permit, the conservation plan, deals with the Federal Endangered Species Act, California State Endangered Species Act, Stream Bend Alteration Program, and then a five-year permit program, and that's the CARP, and that's County Aquatic Resources Program, will be a five-year permit coverage for water quality certification, that's the regional board at state level, and then a permit for a programmatic general permit and a letter of procedures permission through the Army Corps regulations. We've been working on this program in partnership with the City of Lincoln, PCWA, and county. Why do we do regional conservation? And what's the promise in it? It has to do with, correct, stopping the piecemealing and creating a large conservation reserve. This will focus not just on mitigation, but on conservation, tends to be science-based. Everyone works collaboratively to develop these plans. It'll help leverage funding and, of course, permit efficiency. And we're not alone in our efforts here. There's seven major projects going on, conservation efforts in the region, and statewide, there's, will be eleven million acres statewide that will be touched in some respects by a conservation plan in the future. So the program objectives really have the three main, which is to develop the long-term plan that will balance economic growth and conservation. That'll implement general plans for both the county and the City of Lincoln, and deal with some master planning for infrastructure. And that protects the long-term public investment that we're all making in our communities. Again, some additional benefits. You get an integration between the Federal and State Endangered Species Act and the Clean Water Act. Oftentimes, this is all the same resources that we're talking about, just from different regulatory environments, and it's good to get us all on the same page. Provides certainty for communities and development, which eliminates redundancy and provides efficiency. Provides the local control and decision-making, and creates a one-stop shop, which is what our dream is. For those of us that have been working on this, that will become a reality once the permit's in place. Kind of getting into a little bit of brief history. This program came out of the nineteen ninety-four general plan. Placer Legacy started two thousand. Two thousand and one, we began working on what was then known as the Phase One NCCP/ HCP. And in two thousand and five, we actually submitted our first policy document for review for the agencies, and have been working with them since on that. In two thousand and eleven, there was a major overhaul on the policy document, as well as there was a key decision or a key step that happened, which was a hardline map was created. We'll get into more detail about what that meant. But it took quite a while because there was multiple alternatives to try to balance the interest of all of the stakeholders, landowners, agencies, environmental groups, multiple. Lauren can tell you, I think he said forty-seven some alternatives were, had were developed between two thousand and seven and two thousand and thirteen. And then the end result. Some of you might be familiar with this purple map, as we like to refer it. But in May of two thousand and thirteen, all parties came to an agreement, and a hardline map was recreated that helped start shaping a revised conservation strategy. And it was really key, it focused on emphasizing the foothill connectivity along the Bear and Coon Creek rivers, so this purple area. And we'll talk some more about this map, but just in general. The purple that's shown on the map is what we know as the reserve acquisition area. This would be areas where future conservation easements, acquisitions could occur, restoration could also occur. It also has the yellow, which is called the potential future growth area. And that's where development could occur. And the green areas are existing reserves, meaning there's some kind of conservation or open space or agriculture protection already in place that we can work to build upon and create a larger reserve system. In the gray areas are what we designate the non-participating cities, City of Auburn. I'm not gonna switch back and forth. Roseville, and the other incorporated cities in the gray area.
Jennifer, before you leave that map, now, all the purple areas, is that gonna mean that that's set in stone, that those are gonna be open spaces for conservation? So they won't, that'll never change?
Well, this question comes up a lot. What does the purple actually mean? This is like a general plan, it's gonna be a conservation plan, and it'll designate it as potential reserve. The program is a willing participant type of program. So the zoning and the general plan designations of these areas will not change. It is just identifying that, under this larger project, where we choose to develop and where we will choose to conserve in the future, this is the areas. It doesn't actually say, because you're in the purple map out there, you can't ever do anything on your property besides put it into a conservation. If you have a piece of property out there now and it's zoned for agriculture purposes, you'll still have all those rights and entitlements.
Yeah, 'cause I see some areas in purple where I know people want to do some.
Right, absolutely, and they would still have all of those entitlements.
So if the agencies buy off on this plan, if somebody that's in the purple now, will they have to go through a more arduous process because the agencies haven't given their blessing?
No, it'll actually become easier, depending on if they, when we achieve permits, it'll actually become easier for anybody in West Placer to get through impacting any type of resource in this area. And that being that, we've created this system under which, if somebody comes in and says, hey, I am going to impact a wetland here, we have a system in place that deals with all the environmental regulations and process that person has to go through, whether they're in the purple or whether they're in the yellow.
Not gonna make any difference?
If they come in and choose to do a general plan amendment, that would say, now I wanna build, you know, a thousand units out in that purple, the way the plan, the policy document has been shaped to address that would be, it is not considered a covered activity under the plan. So our permit will actually have a section that says, here's all the anticipated projects, and we're gonna get into this later, and we might skip over it now, but all the anticipated projects for the next fifty years under the plan. And it basically says, if it was not in the general plan at the time of the permitted plan, and you choose to amend that general plan, come in and request amendment, which is proper to know is right, that it's not covered. Meaning, they, that particular project would have to go down to the wildlife agencies and resource agencies and seek their own permit. So that's all that means. So, again, anybody could still come in and request from the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, some plan use that isn't allowed under the general plan today, or a community plan today. It just means it would not be part of our program. Meaning, all the efficiencies, all of the structure that this program provides, meaning, you know what you have to do when you come in and you say, I'm impacting X, Y, and Z, and the plan says, okay, this is what you do when you impact X, Y, and Z resources. That is all, again, up to negotiation with each individual regulatory agency.
Commissioner Nader, you also, Lauren Clark with CDRA, you also asked the question as to whether or not it was all of the purple reserve acquisition area goes into conservation, it's only a portion. So that represents the area within which conservation actions would take place, but not all of the purple turns into conservation, only a percentage of it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. So kind of getting into, I think it's important to understand that the key for this hardline map is this is the project, as we think about projects in planning world today. And what this establishes is that it avoids the historical trend, where, as we typically think of projects, we require projects to do onsite avoidance, and that project might be a hundred-acre subdivision, now we wanna see avoidance onsite. And that leads to, you know, resource fragmentation, you might have a small area, an acre, that's just left over. We have some really good examples. Most people are familiar with the example on the screen. Roseville, this is a significant resource that was identified when the mall was developed and set aside. Now it is surrounded by urban development. And so this plan will allow for a more landscape-scale conservation. So those resources that would have normally said onsite, you have to do some on-type avoidance, now we're saying, are, we're avoiding out in what's called the RAA, the purple area. And that'll lead to large-scale conservations that'll be managed as one unit, rather than these small, patchy, fragmented areas that might be managed by different people, and the community wonders why on earth is there a field next to all of this urban development? And don't understand that those resources are there and exist. Again, then we, stepping into a little bit more of the policy side, so taking that purple map, we now are developing our, again, our conservation strategy. So this is actually a figure that was included in the staff report and is actually in the policy document, showing all the green and yellow. And it also shows the protection and, of the various locations. And it's starting to get at the stream system, and we will talk some more about the stream system protection that the program provides. I don't wanna get too far. So again, I tend to live in the policy document world. So kind of walking through the program, I like to talk about how the policy document will function. And since you guys tend to have to get into the policy document, I figured. It's got eleven chapters, the key, of course, that we've been working on for quite the last few years, and the focus has been Chapter Three, which assesses all of that exists today physically and biologically in the area, the impacts that we are projecting from growth, conservation strategy, which we have spent a lot talking about, and the conditions in monitoring. The plan covers fourteen species. This is a change from the two thousand and eleven draft, which we had thirty-one species, we've dropped down to fourteen. Again, we talk about the coverage area, includes West Placer. This map is a little bit hard to see, but mostly along Highway forty-nine to the west. The plan covers two areas. We tend to identify the foothill area, which is typically oak woodland, and then the valley, grassland, for ecological reasons, we start breaking it into areas. And then, as I talked about, for covered activities, we broke it into even smaller areas to discuss and analyze what types of activities might go into what sections, and I know this map's a little hard to see, but there's a foothill potential growth, foothill conservation, valley conservation, valley potential future growth. There is some activities, again, even though the cities are not participating for county purposes, sometimes we have roadways or other infrastructure that might be in there, we have facilities that are located in there. So it is actually in the permit-covered area for us permities, being the City of Lincoln and Placer County. We've also identified a small area of the PCWAs for O and M on some of their canals. The Big Gun Mitigation Bank, or Conservation Bank, is actually part of it, and that's located up in Michigan Bluff. It's shown here, but it's actually a little bit higher on the map of Placer County. And we have some areas to improve fish patches that are identified in Sutter County that are also included in as covered activities in the plan. Chapter Three, again, assessing all the resources that are in this planning area. Mostly, we've emphasized, again, grassland, runopole complexes make up most of the valley, and oak woodland make up most of the foothills. Assessing impacts is a chapter in the document. We've spent a lot of time here. Ninety thousand new homes and a hundred and fifty-two thousand new jobs are expected to be created over fifty years in West Placer. So in identifying that, this column here identifies what is expected to be the direct impacts. A little over thirty thousand acres directly impacted based on our growth projections and population. And building off of that is the conservation strategy, which looks at both mitigation and conservation. And it starts at a landscape-level objectives and goes into more natural community levels and then ultimately species level. So a really good example of this would be, the plan says, one of our goals is to protect riverine riparian areas. The objective is to protect one thousand one hundred and forty acres of riverine riparian areas. And then for a species objective, there might be a specific objective identified that says, within that acreage, we're going to do a restoration project to help preserve one of the species, I would just say fish in this particular case. So we might do some riverine restoration that creates shade trees to change the temperatures along the creeks to better improve the environment for the fish. So that's how the whole program is structured. Again, what Lauren had touched on, within that purple area and also within the stream system, and I apologize, it is pretty hard to see the stream system identified in that purple area. The plan proposes to protect some forty-seven thousand acres. So, of course, that's not the entire area, as Lauren pointed out. Those are our targets. Chapter Six, again, gets into conditions, which is usually what all the developer was want to know, is what do we have to do to get a permit? So Chapter Six talks about the land conversion in general. If you go into an aquatic resources and impact that, what do you have to do under that? And then, again, there's some species conditions, so for example, Swains and Hawkness, there's common setbacks and requirements if you're going to develop on, adjacent to a Swains and Hawkness. So for all of our species where certain things need to identify to protect that species, there's a condition that requires that. The program also has an extensive monitoring and adaptive management program. Just some of the types of monitoring that you'll do under these programs would be compliance, meaning, are we meeting our objectives of impacts to conservation and mitigation? Inventory, what do we have out there? Targeted studies, is there a species we wanna know something more about? And, of course, long-term, how are we doing over the long-term? And apologize, this figure didn't come out very well either. Projector's not in focus. And a key, how are we gonna do all this and who will ultimately be responsible for it? Is the JPA. We're proposing to form, the plan proposes to form a Placer County Authority. That group would be responsible for, as you can see, all these little independent boxes pointing to, there's clauses about independent science has to be consulted under certain conditions, public input has to be provided, wildlife agencies have to be consulted and reported to. So this agency, which would be an elected two-board, one city council member, has, will be established when the permit is approved. And, of course, all of this stuff costs money. And, just in general, it's a six-billion-dollar local investment of a fif, over fifty years. And that local investment is about sixty percent of what the plan costs would cover. The other forty percent would be provided through state and local funding. And just the average operating budget will go up accordingly. In the beginning, nine million, at the end of the permit term, fifty years from now, twenty million. And then, million, excuse me, is that right, million? Yeah, sorry. At the end, the post-permit term, all of this stuff still has to be maintained, even after life of the permit. It's in perpetuity, these conservation easements. And so there'll be an endowment fund that'll grow with the permit. Portions will be projected, money will be put into that, that will fund the post-permit term requirements for the permit. And then, another component of this, again, the overall program for the PCCP is a conservation program, but there's also this program that will allow for development or impacts to aquatic resources. So it's called, commonly known as the CARP, County Aquatic Resources Program. It will authorize take in county waters, that includes state and federal waters, as those are defined. It'll provide a local ordinance, it'll be a programmatic general permit, that'll be five years, and a local letter of permission. So again, this is a little hard to see, but I tend to be a visual person. So there's a lot of overlap between these programs. The blue, the larger blue, would be considered the PCCP, which deals with natural communities, covered species. And then the CARP, there's this overlapping area, which we're always constantly trying to integrate and to get the wildlife agencies to work together. So you don't have one agency wanting mitigation for the same resource and another agency requiring slightly different mitigation for another resource, or monitoring, or management. So it trickles through the entire program. And that all leads to, again, SEQA compliance, there's a larger bubble on this actual document, and into our local ordinances and policies that would overlay both of these programs.
Jennifer, what I'm hearing from most developers is the 404 permit, it's gotten extremely difficult to get now. And will this process make that easier for them? Or will it shorten the length of time for them to get the 404?
Right, so the process, the aquatic resources program would provide a process under which you could get a development permit or a 404 permit at a local level. It'd be issued at a local level. With some consultation, depending on, again, the amount of impacts. I think this slide said, for projects that are under five acres, you, it will be issued at a local level. A programmatic general permit would be issued to the county, and it would be our program. The letter of procedures and permissions, over five acres of wetland will, there'll be a procedures process that will outline how the Corps and the county and the applicant will work together for a permit to be issued through the Corps still.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what, I'm sorry, the local decision that's made. Isn't the Corps still making the decision on the 404?
On, under the programmatic general permit, it would actually be a local program that the county would be.
So the county would make that decision, not the JPA, it would be the county?
JPA or county?
Yeah, the way the CARP is established is, at a threshold, we've proposed a number of different acreage thresholds. The slide is referring to five, but we're still waiting for the final agreement. But wherever that threshold is, permits for 404 would be issued by the County of Placer or the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Corps. So we would actually be doing the work on behalf of the Corps, the permit would be issued by us.
Boy, that's a big step forward.
It's a huge step forward. Yeah, it has not happened yet in the state of California. It may have not have yet happened even nationally, where sort of local government is empowered through local ordinances to integrate their decision-making on an entitlement. So when you consider the effects of a project through SEQA, staff will also bring to you the effects of a project on 404. When you make that decision, you make a single, whole, and complete decision, and then the 404 permit gets based upon that decision, not as a subsequent action.
I know you're still negotiating with the agencies, and particularly the Corps, but if, will they want veto power over what the county might do?
They have oversight responsibility over what we do, so they're watching and monitoring. They also have the ability every five years to renew or not renew the permit that they grant to us. So we're on a renewal cycle of every five years. So as long as we adhere to the standards, which is why we want a plan, so we all agree upfront what the plan says, it's not a project-by-project decision, it's the implementation of a plan is the decision. As long as we adhere to that, that permit should roll over every five years. Beyond that early, that low threshold, the Corps retains some level of discretion. But we are linking the Corps' decision-making, even though they retain the discretion to issue the permit, back to the plan through a memorandum of understanding. So even when they retain discretion, we've still linked them back into the plan. So while they may issue the permit, that certainty question hopefully is resolved because the Corps has agrees through the MOU to implement the deal that we put together.
Now, you said on the JPA, that they get engaged after the permit has been presented to the county. Is that the, that's the next step in the process, is that correct? And then, then the JPA reviews it to see how it complies with the, with the.
No, the review and compliance with the plan and the permit would actually be done at the county and city level. What the JPA will be doing is reporting out, so they'll be preparing the reports. The county will have to report to the JPA. This project did, impacted this amount of acres, this amount of wetlands. Maybe they paid a fee, or they dedicated land. So that would all still be a local decision within the jurisdiction, and then they report that out to the JPA, and the JPA tracks the overall permit and makes sure that we're meeting our stay aheads, meeting our goals and objectives, and reports that to the agencies.
And that's all before the EIR starts, correct?
Can you clarify, what do you mean before the EIR starts?
Well, if, if the permit's been presented, it's reviewed for compliance with the plan. At what point, then, does the EIR start for the project itself?
So the, I know this is, again, hard to see, but the process would all be integrated. So a process coming in today, I will just say, a fifty-acre subdivision comes in today, the process would still be the same. At a local level, the county would receive, or the city would receive the application. With that application, there is now, would be some requirements that has to be submitted under the conservation plan, typically having to deal with what resources are out there, what's being proposed to be impacted. You know, are they doing the required avoidance and minimization onsite? Is there special species surveys that are required? All that information comes upfront. It goes through the entire development process, SEQA, NEPA. All would be done at the same time, in theory, depending on if NEPA is required. But if it's just a local process, we're just saying, and SEQA's required, that would all be done. And then the decision would be made at a local level. And at the end of that decision-making process, that would be reported out to the JPA, is here's the decision that was made on this project. And the JPA is the overarching data collection, you know, impact collection, running the entire, all of the branches of the program. Because the program isn't just limited to impacts and mitigation, there's the conservation component, there's additional requirements for stay ahead, and other objectives that have to be met and reported and monitored every year. So they'll be running a lot of the different components. The local agencies, who are signatories to the permit, the local agencies, the city, the county, and PCWA, will all be responsible to make sure that the permit ultimately is in compliance.
Okay, so with that, you have your EIR and EIS. So basically, somebody brings a permit in, and instead of like two separate documents, it's, it's one package goes through, and then at the end of the day, the county issues the permit and everything, and so the 404 and all the stuff is done. So there's not potentially from the EIR to the EIS or 404 permit being issued, you know.
Right, that's really the, the part of that efficiency in trying to get the agencies for each of these resources that typically tend to operate in their own silos and decisions are made. So local decisions made, then they go to the, one set of the feds to get a decision made, and another set of the feds to get a decision made. The intent of the program is to have an agreed-upon process under which those decisions might be made as the project goes through, consistent with the overall plan. That is the absolute benefit and the key of why communities choose to do this, is the time and money and resources of trying to negotiate with each individual regulator can be very time-consuming and very costly, and can change projects. After a local decision's been made, then maybe a federal decision gets made, which then changes the project, and maybe another state decision had to be made, and it might change that process. So the intent is for the process and the decisions to all be made together. Which is what that slide was trying to show. The CARP, the key elements, again, is to establish at a landscape scale, again, a project scale, the whole West Placer County, of where avoidance and minimization will occur, and to implement low-impact development standards to provide that protection of the resources, and typically BNP's. And under doing that, one of the areas we talk about under the CARP is stream system avoidance. And, again, it's difficult to see on this map, but this is all of the streams in West Placer. There will be avoidance standards and setback standards for the streams that'll address direct and indirect impacts within these corridors. There's also a component of the program that says, if you're connected to these streams and you want to do additional avoid, resource avoidance onsite, how that could work under the program. So maybe you weren't in the purple, and maybe you're in the yellow, but you wanna leave a hundred acres and you're connected to the stream, how that could function under the program. Again, this stream system gets into some state terminologies, protecting the stream zone, and then kind of over in the other side here, waters of Placer County, which might be some isolated or maybe connected runopoles or seasonal wetlands. So there's a whole definition of what the stream system will be. So really, we wanted to bring to you. So really, we wanted to bring to you this this update. But our next step is in the program is we're going to be submitting the 2016, hopefully 2015, December 2015 Conservation Draft Strategy back to the wildlife agencies for review and decision. Um, we've got a complete CARP Aquatic Resources document that had some revisions, that'll be going back to the wildlife agencies. The preparation of the EIR, EIS for this overall program and decision is underway. And we also are going to continue working on the finance plan. There's a lot of components to that. And implementing, uh, the local planning agreement or the planning agreement that will ultimately be the the contract we make with the wildlife agencies. So with that, I'm able to answer any questions? And of course, our encyclopedia Lauren is there to answer any questions that you might have.
What about the Corps? You mentioned wild fish and wildlife, but are you just kind of throwing all of those together in there?
For what the next steps are?
Yeah.
So the Corps is actually, um, they're reviewing both of the, um, policy documents. There's an integration on the policy documents that is occurring as to, again, when you're in a resource, a aquatic resource. But the ultimate decision the Corps is going to be making will be on the Aquatic Resources Program. So we're working to update that and we'll be re-submitting it to the Corps. There was some comments that were made by both the Army Corps and the Regional Board. It it took us three years to get actual written comments from the Regional Board on our program. So.
Three years?
Three years.
Yeah.
So we've now got those comments, we're responding to them and we'll be republishing internally, publishing our our document and providing that to them.
Do you have a list of the the federal and state agencies that you have to go through just for our enlightenment? Maybe for the public's enlightenment?
I don't know if I actually have a list in here. I think at the very beginning.
You're going too fast, I can't read that, you're going too fast.
So just here, we'll do our ABCs here. The Federal Endangered Species Act is the federal wildlife service. They issue a permit. The California Endangered Species Act is a state program issued by the Department of Fish and Wildlife, the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. The Stream Bed Alteration Program is also a state program issued by the State Department of Fish and Wildlife, the State of California. The programmatic water certification is an actual certification from the Water Board at the regional level. There's a state Water Board level and a regional Water Board broken into regions. So that's a, uh, another state permit. And then the programmatic general permit is a federal Army Corps of Engineers permit. In addition to going to the Army Corps of Engineers, there's also a component of when you go into an aquatic resource and need a federal permit, you have to go to the State Historic Preservation Chipo, State Historic Preservation Office.
State Office of Historic Preservation.
There you go. So there's a component of compliance with also cultural resources that we didn't even touch in. We didn't want to totally kill you off today. But there's another component and other agencies that at a federal level, the county staff and we typically don't even hear about those resource discussions and negotiations that go on for cultural resources under the 106 statute, federal statute.
How about like EPA and?
Oh, I totally missed all of those fun.
Yeah, you also, you have NOAA Fisheries under the Department of Commerce for salmon and steelhead. So the US Fish and Wildlife Service is primarily terrestrial species. But if you touch a salmon or a steelhead, and we have two listed salmonids in the county, NOAA Fisheries has authority under the federal, excuse me, Federal Endangered Species Act. And EPA who has sort of, um, keeps track of what the Corps does in their administration of the Clean Water Act. So the EPA essentially in lockstep with the Corps on all regulatory decisions around the County Aquatic Resources Program. So we coordinate equally with EPA as much as we do with the Corps. The Corps has permitted authority under the statute, but the EPA is is right there with them in terms of the overall administration of the Clean Water Act.
So the EPA has to buy into this?
We spend as much time with EPA as we do with the Corps.
Thank you, Wendy. Any other questions?
That was easy.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I wish you hadn't asked that question. Because we were ahead years ago and then we were passed up years ago. Uh, we have been working at this awfully, for an awfully long time. Uh, out of fourteen, fifteen years that we've been working at it, it really was six to seven years uh, between the county and the city of Lincoln sorting out where we were going to conserve and where we were going to grow. So that was the biggest challenge that we had in this work program. And it took six or seven years of internal deliberations, uh, just periodically checking in with the wildlife agencies. So a- as a result, uh, a couple of plans have passed us by. East Contra Costa got approved, uh, Santa Clara County got one approved. In terms of our our peers in the neighborhood, uh, South Sacramento County has been working on this longer than we have, a number of years longer. Yolo has been working on this longer than we have. Uh, Yuba Sutter, uh, in Butte County more recently. And everybody's getting to be almost in the same place. So that is one of the challenges of the work program right now, is the wildlife agencies have not grown by any means in the past few years. But all these plans are sort of converging on the point of getting public review drafts on the street and wanting to get started in the next couple of years. So there's a lot of shuffling of personnel around trying to put out fires at these agencies. We like that sort of scuttlebutt. I think that's better than the alternative. I'll take a rumor.
So realistically, when do you think this is ever going to get done?
This will get done. Um, yeah. Public review draft, our schedule shows January of seventeen. It's on the street. If we get a public review draft on the street, that really means we're going to get this done, right? So we've moved beyond, has local government agreed to do this thing? That's a decision. They've agreed to put it on the street. We we will go to the Board of Supervisors and City Council in Lincoln this time next summer. So a year from now, that's the go-no-go decision of those two bodies. Then we put the public review draft on the street. We go through that deliberative process like we do with any general plan or community plan. Uh, we finalize the document during the course of the next year. There's an agreement that's like a development agreement. It's the contract that binds all these parts and pieces together. That has to go through a final negotiation. The agencies have to write a series of findings, just like we do. They have to publish those findings, make decisions, issue permits. And then we have a signing ceremony, hopefully, uh, somewhere before 2017 ends. And then it's, and then we go live.
Lauren, what's your interaction with the other areas that are going through the same process? Or from a document standpoint, are they, is everything sort of close? Or if it's something at the end of the day, whether it's Placer County or some other jurisdiction gets approval of theirs first? I mean, is everybody looking at sort of saying, okay, now we, you know, we can sort of jump on that and use that as the model to have more power? Or or do you think it's, is it going to be something where there's, um, say, multiple ways of doing this versus one master?
There's two coalitions in the state of California that have formed over the past ten years. Uh, one is the California Coalition of Conservation Planning Partners, if I get the acronym out right.
Right.
And then there's a Northern California subset of that. Uh, and the California Coalition formed largely around funding issues that we are all pushing on the state and the feds to ensure that they pay that forty percent that we think is is their obligation. So we need grants, we need bond measures, we need programs that let us go get that forty percent match that they've promised us. The other reason why those coalitions formed is we all check in with each other to see that we're getting treated the same way. That somebody's not working the deal differently in one jurisdiction, um, that that we didn't find out about it. So we're looking for efficiencies, we're looking for sort of an even playing field. Uh, and we have biannual meetings, we had a meeting in this room just a few months ago with the California Coalition. People flew up from Southern California and we had a web conference and, you know, we sort of have a business agenda and we'll be doing that again this October.
Have you shared your hopeful timeline with the agency?
We have given them our timeline and have been as direct as we can by even bringing David Bosch, the CEO and Supervisor Euler, to the meeting uh, to ensure that we could get an agreement on the schedule.
Uh, have you gotten feedback from them that is realistic?
We got, we didn't get the level of assurances we would have liked, but we got feedback. And they've made decisions since that meeting, which was about six weeks ago, uh, that have showed some follow-through on their part.
Okay, Jennifer?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, is is there anyone in the public that would like to make any comments on this? Okay, seeing none? Thank you for your participation. Okay, and with that, I'll go ahead and close our mission meeting, thank you. Okay, and with that, I'll go ahead and close our mission meeting. Thank you.